All right, good afternoon. Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Michelle Jordan and I’m president of the League of Women Voters of Evanston. Welcome to the forum for candidates running in the upcoming election for city council in the 4th and 5th wards. The city council serves a four-year term. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization dedicated to promoting the active and informed participation of citizens in government. We sponsor these events as a service to the community. The League of Women Voters neither endorses nor opposes candidates for public office. We’d like to thank the city for providing the space and the services for today’s forum. Our moderator today is Valerie Crecci. Valerie has been a League of Women Voters of Evanston member for over 30 years. She has served as president of the Evanston League and she also served on the Cook County and the State League Board. She’s a retired educator who lives and votes in Skokie and is also a cartographer. Valerie will now review the forum rules, introduce the candidates, and then we’ll get started.
Okay, welcome, everyone. I’m glad to get started with my second forum of the day. These are the rules: no flash photography, candidates are going to have a minute and a half to answer the questions. The questions were gathered from people in the community, the league screens them, we rewrite them, make them nice and general, not offensive, all that kind of stuff. Our expectations for the audience is that everyone be polite and remain silent and in their seats, and everything’s gone well so far, so I’m not worried. And up front here are our timers, which I didn’t always point out. So you all will see the paddles go up at 30 seconds and 15 seconds, and then a stop sign, and then I cut you off. So we want to get as many questions in as possible. So that’s also why we’re, I think, not having opening statements today. Everything’s a minute and a half for the questions and a minute and a half for our closing remark. And I also will rotate now, so everybody gets a crack at the question, you know, first time, and doesn’t have to be number four. So with that all said, I think we ought to get started here. So question number one—oh, wait, I should introduce my candidates here. I have candidate Burns, candidate Nusma, candidate Sutton, and candidate Welch. And of course, we made it alphabetical, but not by ward, so we have 5-4 and 5-4, just to make it easier for me. Okay, so we’re going to start. Question number one, we’ll go to the guy with the last name that’s towards the front of the alphabet, candidate Burns. Here’s your question: What do you believe is the top challenge facing the city today and why?
Top issue is definitely our structural budget deficit. We’re there for good reasons. We passed a new pension policy that puts us on track to be—to fund our pensions at 100%. Through collective bargaining negotiations, we’ve paid staff, I think, the wages that they deserve, and to keep us competitive with other municipalities for similar work. And so I think it was for good reason, but nevertheless, we have a structural budget deficit. You know, this year, instead of—this council has not raised a property tax levy, and for me, that vote was intentional. I think we need to do the hard work of figuring out how to cut costs, how to operate more efficiently, but also how to look at new sources of revenue that won’t increase the cost of housing. And so because we held off raising the property tax levy, this past budget cycle, we were able to come up with $2 million in new sources of revenue, some that can be avoided by residents, some that can be shared with nonresidents. I think we need to continue to do that exercise. I also have introduced zero-based budgeting, which is going to be discussed—it was already discussed at the Finance and Budget Committee, is on its way to council, where we’ll, you know, pick a department—I would like to see our Public Works Department be the first department that we do this process with. And you start from scratch, right? You don’t roll over the budget from the previous budget year.
Thanks.
You basically start from scratch, so that’s what I would like to see us do. Thank you.
All right, I’m going to be tough on you guys. You see the sign here. Candidate Nusma.
Thank you, and thank you for hosting us this afternoon. Looking forward to this conversation. In addition to what council member Burns has said about the importance of our budgetary concerns, I’m going to refer to the five other goals of this city council: affordable housing, climate action, economic development, public health, and public safety. I’ve got them written down in front of me right here. I also have them written down in front of me in my normal seat where I sit every other Monday night, to remind me of what is important to this community at large. And to reduce the conversation to what’s the number-one most important thing does a disservice, I think, to the community, because we have so many things that are important. And keeping track of these six, you know, city council goals, which—many of which can be achieved in parallel with each other, but sometimes they come in conflict, you know, that’s where the difficult work of representing the city comes in, and I’m looking forward to continuing to do that work for the next four years.
Thank you. Candidate Sutton.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity. Top challenges—thank you. Top challenges, I feel, as a candidate for the city. One, and I think my highest priority, is housing. And coming up with suggestions, it’s unfortunate that of all the suburbs north of Chicago, Evanston has the least successful smaller number of units available, and we could do better than that, and so I have a couple of suggestions for that. Number two, to have some kinds of meetings open to discuss the important things like comprehension, planning, and zoning, that I don’t think have been sufficient. And last, but most important, apathy in the 5th ward. I do not want this ward to be the least amount of voters. We did it for Obama a couple of years ago, that was the highest number. The vote in our ward, I would like to return to that number. Thank you.
Thank you. You came in under time. Candidate Welch.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming today.
Push the button there.
Push the button.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming today. I’m going to resist reducing what is the biggest issue facing Evanston and talk about two. One is, I agree with that the city budget is a huge issue, because it really conditions everything else. We can’t do what we want to do if we don’t have a sustainable budget. And things I would like to see in the future, and I think our budget is very crucial at this time, because as a federal employee, I know very well that we’re facing reduced—you know, great likelihood of reduced federal funding, but I would like to see us reduce our reliance on consultants. I know that we have a lot of open positions in Evanston for the city staff that haven’t been filled. I’d also like to see us find a way to reduce our change orders in our projects, so let’s investigate why these get added to. Those are just some of my initial thoughts on the budget. And my second one, I guess I will have to talk about later, but it’s related to Envision Evanston and zoning.
Thank you. You’ll get a chance. Okay, question number two goes to candidate Nusma. The city has not raised property taxes for two years. What additional sources of revenue would you support? What cuts to current programs would you support to help balance the budget?
We haven’t raised property tax, or we haven’t increased the levy substantially in four or five years, depending on how close you want around to zero, so I want to just, you know, be factual about that. And we’ve done so at a time when inflation, over those last four years, is up, you know, somebody’s going to help me with a number, 20% or so. And so we have done hard work over the last four years of this council, in an environment where we have provided more funding, rightfully so, to our pensions, and an environment where we had union contracts come up and we gave substantial raises to all of the union employees in the city. So we have been doing this work of tracking our expenses all along, and that’s something that we’re going to have to continue to do, because as we have discussed at council, at some point, we either need to cut significantly our expenses or find some additional sources of revenue. In our last budget discussion, we went through an exercise and contemplated 30 different—30 or so different revenue sources, and, you know, put some of those into the budget moving forward. Yeah, I think with 15 seconds remaining, I will just summarize and say, we are going to have to continue that discussion, looking for sources of revenue and making sure the decisions we make on the dais here are revenue-neutral.
All right, candidate Sutton.
The most significant part of my tax bill is the schools, 65 and 202. I don’t know about anyone else. So what can we do as a city to address some of these concerns on our property taxes? The first priority for me is to come up with more programs to help the elderly who want to stay in their homes. We should have many kinds of forms, as I’ve known in other states, where you have a longevity conclusion, and also you have an opportunity to get assistance on paying your property taxes. Evanston needs to work on improving these programs and bringing it so everyone in Evanston feels they can live here without being under a lot of strain of paying high property taxes and losing their home.
Thank you. Candidate Welch.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. The city has not raised property taxes for two years—that’s up to debate. What additional sources of revenue would you support? What cuts to current programs would you support to help balance the budget?
So before we look at outright cuts, I think we need to scrutinize such things as when we take out bonds, our debt service, for one thing. The other thing is to watch very closely on budgeted expenses. I know note that the last council, there wasn’t—not a goal to increase our community centers, and I note that my opponent voted in favor of purchasing an additional community center that was not in the budget and appeared rather suddenly on the council agenda, and while I certainly support, I know initially it was planned for inclusive sort of recreational activities. I question if those couldn’t have been included in our already existing community centers. So those are some of the things that I would initially look at, and as again, as I mentioned, I think we need to look at our consultants. We spend an awful lot of money on consultants, and I think there are resources in the community and professionals—we have a major university, people who would be willing to donate some expertise before we spend millions on consultants, so I’d take a look at that.
Thank you. Candidate Burns.
You know, increase in the property tax levy is the button that most governments press, right? And so we always have it on the side in case we need it. It’s one of the more reliable sources of revenue for local jurisdictions, and it impacts all of us, including renters. I want everybody to know that. Typically, those costs are passed on to renters from the landlord. Before we push that button, though, I think there are things that we need to do, so we started to do some of that, looking for new sources of revenue, especially new sources that impact residents less and nonresidents more. We’ve done that. Some of our fees and fines hadn’t been adjusted in a decade or two, right? And so we need to increase those just to cover inflation. And then I talked about zero-based budgeting, which I referred, and I want to start with the Public Works Department, because I think there’s a lot there. They have a lot of equipment that they purchase, materials, contracts that they sign, and so I think we need to dig into that department to see if there’s any way that we can kind of cut costs, operate more efficiently, introduce technology, et cetera. And then I think we just need to educate people on the existing exemptions, like senior freezes that already exist, and helping people to appeal their taxes and doing those things to help people keep people in their homes.
Thank you. Okay, now we’re going to go to question number three, and it’ll go to candidate number three, candidate Sutton. Envision 2045 makes many recommendations, including zoning changes. What changes to zoning do you think should be made to address the need to increase the housing stock in Evanston?
To increase the housing stock, we have to do one or two things. The current zoning laws make it very difficult, and many are not enforced, because developers generally ask for variance and get it. We could do things like land trusts, we could do things like set-asides with city property to provide housing for those residents who want to remain in Evanston.
Thank you. We’re going to get to more questions with you. Candidate Welch.
So the zoning change—I mean, as initially proposed, the change was to allow up to four units on what is currently zoned for single-family homes, and this was billed as essential for affordable housing. And I just don’t think the facts bear that out. We’ve had public comment, and, you know, our local media has had letters from affordable housing experts who are saying that actually, this is a gift to developers. This is going to result in new construction. New construction is very costly, and it’s also been implied this is going to provide housing for the homeless, but four flats don’t provide housing for the homeless. They’re not—it—it’s not something by scale that is—can be financed as affordable housing. As in addition, if—so, you know, there can be special use permits. I know there was a church that wanted to build affordable housing in their parking lot and thought they couldn’t do it unless there was this zoning change, but I’m not aware they ever came to the council to ask for a special use permit. So I think the zoning should be block by block. I do think we need a change in the zoning, and I would support conversions of single-family homes to two flats, but I think it really needs to be almost block by block, and this blanket-up zoning is not going to have the intended effect.
Thank you. Candidate Burns.
I’m sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
Yeah. Envision 2045 makes many recommendations, including zoning changes. What changes to zoning do you think should be made to address the need to increase the housing stock in Evanston?
So one thing I want to—I want to get straight for everybody is, personally, I don’t see a line—and I don’t know who has actually tried to make this argument—a line between four units everywhere, let’s take that as an example, and more affordable housing directly, somewhere that people got confused by that. I think the reason why we’re having a conversation about allowing more density in more places in Evanston is if we feel as though there’s a kind of overwhelming tax burden and cost of living in Evanston. And so one of the ways to address that is by expanding the tax base, right? Inviting more people to come live with us here in Evanston so that they can chip in towards the taxes. So I think that’s the reason why I think we should be looking at places in Evanston where—that currently has very restrictive zoning, to see what is the most appropriate way to add density in those areas. I think the way we do that, we need to be very thoughtful, it needs to be data-centered, data-focused, and data-driven, and we need to make sure that we’re having a conversation with everybody to get ideas about how to do their best. And in terms of affordable housing, and I’ve said this before, I think the best way to address affordable housing is for the city to step in and continue to get site control so that we can take the profit off of housing, and whether it’s through land trusts or through other means, make sure that we’re creating affordable housing in perpetuity for the community.
Thank you. Candidate Nusma.
Yeah, thank you. I want to start off by acknowledging that we have a housing crisis, not only here in Evanston, but in this region and around the country. You know, the supply of housing available to Evanstonians and Illinoisans and Americans is not keeping up with the demand. So one thing we have to do locally, which in and of itself is going to be insufficient, but one thing we have to do locally is to allow ourselves the possibility of creating more and different types of housing throughout Evanston, not just in downtown, not just in high-rises, but throughout the neighborhoods. So I am, you know, philosophically in support of those general objectives of Envision Evanston, but it’s really important that we get the details right. And this, to me, means having conversations like I recently had with some neighbors on Elmwood Street, just north of Dempster, who looked at the draft zoning map and saw on Sherman, just, you know, west of the tracks, by the Mexican café—or the Mexican shop, that there was 100 feet proposed, you know, to be allowed on that block. And I looked into it and looked at the, you know, the old map and the draft proposal and the floor area ratio, and I came to the conclusion that, you know what, they’re right. Gave that feedback to the staff running this, and they said, you know what, you’re probably right. And that underscored to me the importance of taking a systemic kind of neighborhood-by-neighborhood, block-by-block look to make sure we get the details right.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we’re going to go to the fourth question, goes to the fourth candidate first, and it is: Many city properties, including fire stations, the police station, and the civic center, are in need of immense renovations or new buildings. What do you see as the best way to address these critical needs and avoid similar situations in the future? Candidate Welch.
So it’s been pretty widely acknowledged that Evanston does not have a great record of maintaining its buildings, so we definitely need to make a plan for that for the future. As far as what to do with these buildings, we really need to look at the array of options, and we’ve gotten a huge grant from the federal government—if we get that money—that is going to give us money for consultants to see what we should do with these properties. And I’m very concerned that there not be any preconceived ideas about what to do with these properties, that they necessarily be sold. We need to get partial rehab estimates, complete rehab estimates, mixed use, whether some of them can be used for affordable housing. So, for example, the civic center, some of us really feel that it was rushed to that we’re going to leave the civic center permanently, and it’s been said that, well, the numbers say it’s not viable to stay here, but there was never a complete estimate given for a partial rehab. Those numbers are not in the record, so that is my thoughts on that.
Candidate Burns.
You know, whatever possible, I think we should co-locate. I think there’s some value to that. I think about Robert Crown with the library and the community center being in one space. I think fire and police could also co-locate via one space and share infrastructure. There’s some cost savings that we can benefit from. You know, I think what I think about the most is the 909 Davis move, moving from here to 909. I think it’s one of the best decisions that this city can make. It literally is the public transit center of our community. It sits right between the Metro and CTA train stops, all the—it’s where all the buses connect. When you think about different kind of modes of transportation, it is our public transit center and is the most accessible place in our community. I think we literally cannot be in a better place. When you talk to staff, they say this building is—because of its large footprint, people feel siloed, they don’t often talk to one another outside of departments. The 909 Davis, it was built to be an office, there’s less individual office spaces, it’s more of an open-floor plan, people are going to be able to collaborate a lot more effectively in that building. And then we all know we’ve lost 10,000 to 12,000 office workers in downtown. We need to find a way to stimulate economic activity to support our small businesses there, and this move does that. So for a whole host of reasons, I really want to focus on emphasizing, I think that is a great decision that we’ve made, and I think people will be happy with it. Thank you.
Candidate Nusma.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge that the city has not done a terribly good job historically of maintaining properties that we do own, and that is something we need to work on, that’s something we need to get better at. I do think, however, it is time to cross 2100 Ridge, the building we’re sitting in now, off the list of possibilities for the future forever home of a civic center. This building is too big, you know, almost twice the size of what we need for city services. It’s too expensive to renovate in whole or in part. It’s not functional as anything really other than an early 20th-century girls’ school, and it just makes a whole lot of sense for some reasons which council member Burns got into. It makes more sense for us to be downtown. And the carrying cost of this building after we move out by the end of this month is somewhere around $50,000 a month. I think this building will be better put to use with some adaptive reuse, with some form of housing, and I’m hoping when we have this conversation at council on Monday that a majority of my colleagues will agree with me that it’s time to cross this building off of the list, put it on the tax rolls, and it’s—I believe that’s in the best interest for Evanston now and into the future.
Thank you. You’re all doing such a good job watching those times. Candidate Sutton.
Upon renovations, again, I look at the city’s track record, and it’s not that good. Properties like Harley-Clark have been sitting there, not developed for years. Then we look at sometimes the concerns that people have about the beaches and access to them, but more important, my concern about the parks. Many of the parks are in substantial need of upgrading and meeting the needs of the seniors. I’m against the move of the building, because I’m 80 years old, and I don’t know if I’ll be able to walk from one of those parking garages in the snow.
Thank you. Okay, question number five is going to go first to candidate Burns. What is your understanding of the level of housing cost burden in your ward versus that in the city as a whole? What do you think the city should do to increase the supply of affordable housing?
You know, I think the last number I saw is over half of the ward is housing cost burden, which, you know, is defined by people who are paying more than 30% of their income towards rent, and many others are what we would call severely housing cost burden, which is 50% and up. There’s a lot to say here. I guess what I want to emphasize is, one, we’ve got to work doing something about it, and so, you know, under my leadership, I’ve been able to—we’ve approved over 34 units of a new affordable housing for the 5th ward. We’ve acquired over two acres of land that we now can protect and preserve for future affordable housing sites. Jackson and Emerson is an example. We’ve expanded our land trust, both on Brown and also on Hovland. I’ve worked with the community to acquire property that we plan to donate to community partners for affordable housing, to offer affordable homeownership opportunities for the community. As I said a few questions ago, the best way to create more affordability in this town is for the city to get involved in acquiring as much property as we can to set it aside for affordable housing in perpetuity. If—the—the private market is not set up to provide affordable housing, the point is to make a return for their investors. We have to remove the profit, which we can do that by getting involved in acquiring a property and partnering with affordable housing developers whose mission it is to create affordable units in the city.
Thank you. Candidate Nusma.
Thank you. Housing costs in the 4th ward reflect national trends that we’re experiencing locally here in Evanston. My wife and I have been in our house for 17 years, since before the kids were born. Honestly, I’m not sure we could afford to buy our house in 2025. And one thing we can do to increase the supply of affordable housing, capital A, capital H, meaning, you know, housing at the lower end of the cost spectrum, is to do things like what we have done recently, adopting our Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, which, you know, places some very, you know, compelling measures in place for developers to add additional affordable units to multifamily buildings. In addition to the direct investment, which council member Burns has alluded to, we have an opportunity coming up in the 4th ward to perhaps invest directly in some affordable housing, in a property on Main Street that hopefully will be under city control fairly soon, 801 Main, it’s the former laundromat right there. I’d also want to acknowledge that the Envision Evanston process is directly attempting to add additional supply of housing at all levels of income, to add to the supply, which will have a downward impact on prices.
Thank you. Candidate Sutton.
Thank you. One of my concerns is right now, it seems the 5th ward is probably the ward with the most affordable properties. Having said that, there are certain things that we can do to address this situation. One, we can mend our comprehensive plan to include more specific policies about affordable housing and diversity. Two, an amendment to our zoning code to include more specific— Two, an amendment to our zoning code to include more specific and require larger developments to have 15% or more of all housing units be affordable. Number three, the establishment of a housing trust fund, and last, the establishment of a demolition tax to help fund housing initiatives. Thank you.
Candidate Welch.
So, if I'm a council member, affordable housing will be one of my top priorities. I'm very passionate about this issue. I will say, I'm baffled at those who have acknowledged that the private market cannot provide affordable housing, who have, who have sort of enabled the charge forward that zoning is the big issue. The bottom line is, if Evanston wants affordable housing, we will have to invest public funds, local public funds, and we can hash out as a community what that will be, but even private, even financing with affordable housing financing, those are, you know, they come from federal tax credits, those are going to be limited. So, and I also, our inclusionary housing ordinance is inadequate. It allows the developer to not put in the units. It is actually, long-term, more financially viable for them to not build the units and to pay into the fund, and many of them will do that. Also, they're allowed to put the affordable units, and I brought this up at the city council, and people didn't seem to understand what I was talking about, they can put them off-site. And I will note that my opponent said that the present ordinance was elegantly written, and I just disagree. This is redlining.
All right, I am stressing here, because I ran over last time, but I'm going to give you one more question, and then we want to close it within reasonable time. So, this is going to go, the last question, number six, is going first to candidate Nusma, and here it is. Evanston has several large not-for-profit entities within its city limits. Do you believe the city has positive relationships with these entities? What would you like to see changed?
Thank you for that question, and let's just be clear, we're talking mostly about Northwestern University. We're also talking about our school districts and the hospitals, as well as Rotary, I suppose. They're a large international nonprofit entity, but, you know, let's kind of cut the BS and acknowledge that we're talking about Northwestern. The importance of the relationship between Northwestern University and the city of Evanston is, you know, is one of, it's a really important relationship, and one that requires continued nurturing and continued attention. Honestly, we're not in that great of a place at the moment. You know, I thought we were going to be in a much better place, kind of turning a corner with the historic community benefits package that we negotiated as part of the stadium deal a year and a half ago. That was going to be, put us in a really good place. We have $150 to $170 million coming into this community from Northwestern over the next 15 years as a result of that, as a result of that engagement. But, you know, we've had some recent conversations on other issues which have not been nearly as productive. So, you know, I do think that getting Northwestern and the city of Evanston into a much better place, relationship-wise, is in everybody's best interest.
Good, thanks. Candidate Sutton.
Thank you. First thing, when we start talking about, excuse me, support and looking at our not-for-profits, I'm very concerned that maybe we ought to change the name. Many of the not-for-profit organizations that I have had, there's a lot of problems as a small landlord dealing with. I also would like to see small landlords have more resources from these government programs. We didn't get anything from the ERA. We didn't get anything from this. You always say you're going to come to the fifth ward and help us, but when it comes to dispensing the funds, you have amnesia. We need to address that immediately. We need to address this by taking a look at what our need is, and it's very hard to say this is an affordable committee or community when most of the houses start at $350,000, which means if you don't have an income of $100 or $150,000, you need not apply.
Thank you. Candidate Welch.
So, regarding our nonprofits, the largest one is Northwestern, and I, I think that we do have somewhat of a strained relationship that could be improved if we go to them for more of their resources, in terms of their research, their, you know, their knowledge to initiate projects that could help the city, to advise us. I think we, you know, maybe we haven't leveraged that to the extent that we could have. I'm specifically thinking of the Healthy Buildings Ordinance, which is up for a vote Monday. At the city council, Northwestern University offered their resources to flesh out the details, the metrics, more of the expectations, the fines, how to flush this ordinance out because it's very bare bones, and some of our property owners and our other care homes, institutions are very worried about their financial position because it's a big question mark, because it's left unfleshed out. So, that's an example of how I think Northwestern could help us. I'm also, I'm not willing to give up the idea of payment in lieu of taxes from Northwestern, and I don't want to just pick on them, but, you know, there are other nonprofits that we need to continue that conversation as well.
Thank you. Candidate Burns.
Yeah, I would just point out that we do have the city liaison committee, which allows a quarterly opportunity for the city in both school districts to meet, which has been helpful. You know, it's a good touch point when we're discussing things like the Healthy Building Ordinance and other policies that may impact them. Continuing along with that, I think we just need to make sure that we include all of our institutions early in the process when we're discussing policies that may impact them. I think we need to make sure that we're reaching out to decision-makers and not necessarily faculty, which I think was the case with the Healthy Building Ordinance. We didn't really have the right people in the room. We need to make sure we get the decision-makers early in the process, again, when we're discussing policies that will impact them. I think it's like any relationship, it has to be built on respect. It has to be built on assuming that the other has good intentions, and, and, and part of that, and it's also being, making sure that we're operating off of facts. I can't tell you how many times I've heard people throw around endowments at Northwestern, and all endowments are not unrestricted, right? Some endowments have to, most endowments have to be used for very specific purposes, and so, every time we throw around this huge endowment number, assuming that it's unrestricted and they can use it for anything, it just shows a lack of understanding of how their finances work, which doesn't help with trying to build authentic, genuine relationship with Northwestern, as an example. So, we need to do better.
Candidate Newsom.
I started off answering that question. So, I think we're closing statements now?
Whoa, whoa, no. Didn't you have a crack at that last one about the nonprofits?
I'll have another crack at it.
Oh, oh, sorry. All right. But, because you went first, candidate Sutton gets to go first for the closing statement. Sorry for the screw-up here. It's been a long afternoon.
Thank you for everyone coming out. If you hadn't learned in the past, you should know now, elections have consequences. For one time in my life, I'm glad I live in Illinois. We're completely surrounded by mega, and the policies that they are looking for and the kinds of support that we usually get from Washington does not seem as going to exist anymore. So, what is our responsibility as a community? Evanston has always been a progressive community on paper. We were the only city I know in America that got an amendment to the Constitution, the right for women to vote. So, we need to go back to those things where we work together as community and put our resources together to make sure that this is a place where everyone can stay without being under a lot of pressure. I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Welch.
So, I'm running to help Evanston meet the present moment in a way that preserves the characteristics that drew many of us to live here. My opponent said concerts at Ryan Field will put Evanston on the map. Evanston is already on the map, and support the concerts or not, this reflects a fundamental misunderstanding of what Evanston means to its residents. Meeting the present moment will involve some change in Evanston. In order to achieve that change, we need trust in our local government. Evanston Development Cooperative received $300,000 in federal funds to help households in the fifth and eighth ward. We cannot identify how any of that benefited any household, and my opponent has refused to answer a question about what he knows where the money has gone. My motto is going to be, nothing about you without you. I pledge to act on what I hear from fourth warders, not simply hold meetings. With a doctorate in ethics, I understand the ethical issues impacting the decision-making process in Evanston. I will bring as a council member skills gained from 22 years in public service, both writing and applying national government policy. I know the history of issues before the city council, having followed them for years, and I will be quickly up to speed as a council member. I am an official write-in candidate, and your votes for me will be counted. On a paper ballot, you'll darken the oval and connect the arrow and write in Welch.
Okay. Candidate Burns.
All right, one more note. Yeah, it's been an honor to serve. You know, for me, my mother, growing up, we, you know, she was on the school board at 202 and worked at SEDA, and so, you know, I enjoy this work. It's in my blood. It's what my sister and I were shown, is how you live a kind of meaningful, fulfilling life, and I think it shows in just how active I've been, and so, constituent services is really important to me. If you call, email, you have an issue, I respond, we figure out, figure things out together. I sit on the most council committees than the other council member. It's important to me that fifth ward residents have, that their voices are reflected in policies early on in the process. I hold monthly ward meetings, I've done that since I started, except for holidays. I've already talked about the affordable housing work that I've been able to do. I'm a frequent attender at all of our four small business districts that we have. I've partnered with community members like Connections to plan signature events, the fifth ward block club being one, partnered with Church and Dodge Business District to do our holiday tree lightning ceremony. I've planned mobile DMV, DMV events, three actually we've done at Fleetwood. I planned a senior resource fair. I did a youth shoemaking workshop where we took 10 Evanston High School students and taught them how to do traditional shoemaking. I love, I love what I do, and I think it's evident in how much I've been able to accomplish with my community and colleagues on council, and I'd like to continue to do that work. Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, candidate Nusma.
Thank you, and thank you, Valerie, for hosting this session, and thank you to the League for, you know, hosting all the candidates and providing such a valuable service to our democracy. Let the rest of the country take a lesson on what civil, you know, elections and civil campaigns should look like. We're doing it right here in Evanston. I have enjoyed serving on the council the last four years, and am proud to have upheld the promises I made four years ago to support equity, to support economic development, to support environmental sustainability in Evanston and around the fourth ward, and doing so as an engaged representative of my community. You know, I've met regularly with residents, I've met regularly with other stakeholders impacted by city council decisions, and, you know, I look forward to building on this experience to continue doing that job for the next four years. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Now, a round of applause to all our candidates. It's a big deal to step up. I'm really, almost done on time here. The forum will be, has been taped, and it'll be available, the video, on the League website, lwe.org. Don't forget to vote on April 1st, and thank you all for coming.